Good morning and welcome to Alvin County Council, our regular session. It is Tuesday, June 25th, 2024, 9:00 AM, and I will call this meeting to order. Before we proceed with the regular agenda, I want to take this opportunity to introduce our new Director of Planning and Development, Matt Yvonne. Matt joins us from the county of Brant. We served as their Director of Development Planning since 2020. With previous experience at the county of Norfolk and the city of Kitchener, Matt has built an impressive career as a professional planner. He holds a bachelor's degree in specialising in environmental studies and urban planning, as well as a master's degree in planning and environmental studies, both from the University of Waterloo. I also believe you've been working quietly on a PhD, correct? Halfway through. Well, good luck on that pulse hole digger. Please join me in welcoming Matt to Alvin County, and I wish you all the success in building out the planning team and hopefully a long career with us. So if council, if you want to take a moment to welcome Matt, it'd be greatly appreciated. I won't offer you a chance to rebut that. First order of business is the adoption of the minutes.
Resolved that the minutes of the meeting held on June 11th, 2024 be adopted.
The minutes have been posted and hopefully everyone's had opportunity to peruse them. Is there any errors or omissions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion moved by councillor Hen, seconded by councillor Latham. All in favour? That's carried. I will remind members of any disclosure to pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. See, none noted. We have no petitions this morning or presentations, which brings us to the Committee of the Whole.
Resolved that we do now move into Committee of the Whole.
We have a mover and seconder for that. Councillor Crockett and councillor Sloan will second. All in favour? I just carried, thank you. Section six, Reports of Council Outside Boards and Staff. Six one, Director of Engineering Services Corporate Asset Management Plan Phase Two. Good morning, Peter, and I advise council buckle in because it's a long one.
Good morning, Mr. Warden. Through you to the rest of County Council. In December 2017, the Ontario Regulation 58817 was adopted, and this is also known as the Asset Management Planning for Municipal Infrastructure Regulation. The county remains on target to comply with this regulation. We're in the midst of a multi-year comprehensive corporate asset management plan. I'm going to refer to that as camp from here on in. And the idea of the camp is to improve its asset, our asset management practices and processes. The county's latest camp was prepared by staff, and it focuses on the county's stormwater, sanitary, transportation, fleet, long-term care homes, corporate facilities as well. And this was adopted by County Council in 2022. This plan is available on the county's website, and it's also available on the link on the page, top of the page of nine of the council agenda. The implementation of this Ontario regulation is set across multiple timeline milestones. We're now at the July 1st, 2024 milestone, and this is the deadline for municipalities to have an approved asset management plan for all municipal infrastructure. So we were very close to completing the core infrastructure. It was adopted in 2022. We also had a partial non-core infrastructure implementation at that time as well. The two remaining departmental categories that are now presented as a supplemental report to the camp include information technology and cultural services. And that's the report in front of you today. The county is responsible for a diverse array of assets, which have a combined approximate replacement value of $1.38 billion. It's a staggering figure when you look at it. Effective asset management aims to manage assets in a way that balances the levels of service, risk, cost effectiveness, and this is important to provide throughout the asset life cycle. As councils heard us state before, the initial capital cost usually only represents 10 to 20% of the total asset cost throughout its life. And therefore managing the asset is an important financial process. The camp, this camp will inform future budget development and arm the County Council with information required to make important investment decisions. So the next phase of the Ontario regulation develops levels of service, and these are metrics to be utilized for different asset classes. There is a diagram on the top of page 10 of the agenda that showcases the, this timeline, and we're able to show, right now we're in 2024 to include all infrastructure. During this next phase, we'll be able to set these targeted levels of service. And then from there on end, it'll be annual reporting to ensure that the plan remains up to date. So the key highlights in the camp that's being presented to County Council today, for information technology, for example, we have 441 desktop or laptop computers, 191 cell phones or tablets, 27 storage or backup servers, and this has a total combined replacement value of $3.1 million. And overall, these assets are in good condition. For cultural services, we have 10 libraries, 210,000 books, and with a replacement value of close to $3 million as well. Once again, assets are in good condition. All camp development to date has been prepared exclusively by county staff, and it's recommended that this final version, which incorporates council-approved levels of service, be prepared by an experienced consultant. The proposed budget for asset management was established in 2018 with a project value of $100,000. And because of all the work done to date was done completely by in-house staff, that project value still remains today. So there's a $100,000 project budget that is available to complete the final phase of the asset management report. I'd be pleased to answer any questions. Thank you.
And thank you very much for that, Peter. It is a staggering sum, as you say, $1.38 billion. Wow. Council, any questions for Peter on this report? Councillor Crockett?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Peter. $1,380 million is the asset value. So it's kind of sounds more actually when you say 1,380 million. What, what do we have to have in our resources according to Regulation 588 in order to meet the requirements for servicing this particular, you know, this, this asset?
I'll be able to answer what we've currently put in the camp as far as a financial strategy to help, help fund the proposed plan to council. I'd be looking to possibly our treasurer to fully understand what is regulated to council, what we require to have. The financial strategy that has been presented, and please note that all the figures we're speaking of are 2020 figures. The camp was developed in 2020, and there has been some changes to the financial plan, the tenure plan that council has seen in the last couple of years. One of those significant changes was the incorporation of construction inflation that has increased significantly since 2022. Future plans will also change significantly as we prepare for anticipated growth in the region. The financial strategy that was also, that complements the plan is found in the latter section in section 12 of the camp that's provided for you here today. And in that financial strategy, there's a number of variables utilized to mitigate the potential risks and unknowns going forward. One of them, for example, is to exhaust existing reserves to help fund the plan. If there's anything else that maybe our treasurer could shed some light on in regards to council requirements that are necessary to, to fund the, the plan? That'd be helpful.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council. Thank you, Peter, for inviting me to speak on this, on behalf of this. If you look into the page 54 of your plan, it shows the financial strategy there as being a zero base. So at the end of the day, we have to be able to fund what we are, what we are servicing. So regardless of whether that's done through reserves or debt or through any other strategy like funding from the province, we end up having to be at a zero base. So our plan in the 10-year plan is to borrow heavily from our reserves that are not directly related to capital in order to offset or mitigate interest rates, because interest rates have been very high. In order to do that, we need to have capital reserves. We need to have other reserves in place in advance of the need. So the 2024 plan, we had planned to spend $24 million. We were on target for that spend as per the budget. And at this point, we are on target to meet that, that particular year's plan. If you look out further into the plan, you'll see that there are other years where we are negative on that. So we are then putting money back into our reserves in order to fund future reserves or to replenish those reserves for future needs. So the fact that we do have reserves is a good thing. The fact that we're sitting on a bit of money in order to fund future projects is proactive. It's not then enabling us to go out and borrow money as well. It also helps with our ARRs because it ends up making sure that we are in a good position if we do need to borrow money. And I just do want to remind council that we are on target to borrow 25 million for the Terrace Lodge rebuild, so that will also have to be put into our, is in our operating plan so that we can then repay that debt back to Infrastructure Ontario. So there, the, the financial strategy here is to, you know, put a little away when we have savings or surplus in order to fund future years so that we're not reliant on debt.
Councillor Crockett?
Thank you. If I can follow up on that, two items really. Just to be clear, what is meant by zero base? And secondly, you say put a little away. What, what is the amount that we're talking about in putting it a little away?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to councillor Crockett. A little away means if we are able to have savings on some of our projects, because we do fully, fully expect to have some savings if we're efficient. So when we are able to put that away, that comes in the form of a surplus on perhaps a tender that we release. So then we are able to put that money away at year end if we are not having to use it for other purposes. Say we go over on another tender. So we are very cognizant of what we are using those funds for as we fund our capital projects. And when we say zero base, it means that we cannot technically over-fund ourselves or under-fund ourselves. In order to be fair to the rate payer, we have to ensure that what we ask them to fund us for is what we need to use. So we're not putting away money unnecessarily.
Thank you. I don't want to take up all the time, but just the last question. And probably I should have looked it up in the budget, but what, what is the amount in the reserve that deals with the asset management plan?
Currently, we are at approximately $4 million, which is what we were on target for at this time.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor Sloan?
Thank you. Quick question to Jennifer. How do you account for growth with respect to increased assessment going forward? Looking at your, you know, what are you putting in for your metric when it comes to growth?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to councillor Sloan. We base our growth reserve on the prior year's growth. So if we have a 2% growth in the prior year, that money is put aside in, in a growth reserve for future growth needs of the county. These items are not currently within our capital plan. So we do not have a forecasted amount of need for that growth, which is something that we do need to work on going forward. There's a lot of moving parts as far as what the needs will be in the municipalities and the surrounding areas that we are responsible for. So we're looking for that growth reserve in order to fund it as if it was a DC charge, because we do not have development charges at this time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yep, councillor Jiguer.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you. So I just wanted to get a bit of clarity on that page 54 when it talks about that the financial gap shown indicates that the next five years are not fully funded and we'll have to lean on past practices. So you could clarify what you mean by that? I think you've already answered it, but I just want to be sure. And as a follow-up to that, the, the use of reserves is just one line right now. I know we have multiple reserves. I'm wondering if council could then have a follow-up report that would detail exactly how we're managing the reserves, like how, how much we have to put in each year? Which, which years are we, you know, depleting versus replenishing? I'm sure there's more to the story than just that one line. So if we could have a report that unpacks that a little bit, unless you tell me, because in this report, it is also mentioned that 2025 is the year that you develop the full financial strategy. So if you tell me that that's when we're going to get more of the, you know, how we use the reserves, replenish them, deplete them, then I could wait for that. If not, maybe an interim report perhaps to the finance committee just to unpack that a little bit. So I'll go back to, then if you could clarify that statement around the, the funding gap at the moment for the next five years?
Jennifer, do you have an answer for that?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to councillor Jiguer. Yes, certainly the reserve that I'm referring to here mainly references the capital reserve, because we do not have, that's the use of capital reserve, because we do not have any other reserves that we can pull from at this time. The other reserves, if you have a library reserve or you have a reserve specific to a certain thing, you have to only spend it on that certain thing. So a lot of our reserves are departmental reserves that we borrow on behalf of the county to do work, but we don't technically, you know, limit their ability to use their reserves. So we would maybe draw down on our mill rate stabilization reserve, which is our working capital reserve. In order to self-finance, that's the one that we're self-financing with. But the use of the actual reserve is the capital reserve. So in, in this plan, if you look on the far right-hand side, you'll see that the use of reserves is a zero, a net zero. So we're borrowing and paying ourselves back. Whereas in the, the one below, we are actually planning to use 7.5 million, which is what we're hoping to have over the 10-year plan in order to fund what we need. When I say that there's a gap, I'm still speaking to the fact that the two items that we just referenced here, the, the infrastructure for library and for IT, so thank you very much, is not part of this plan yet. So there, that gap still exists because it's not actually built into this plan yet. So the total of those two alone is another 300,000 over the next 10 years that we need to build in. So that would be part of growth, or perhaps we can build that into taxation.
Councillor Crockett?
Thank you. Just a couple of more items, if I may, through you, Mr. Warden. First of all, I would like to support councillor Jiguer's request for a follow-up on, on reserves. Secondly, one of the, one of the lines, one of the procedures mentioned was that there are targeted levels of service that the ministry requires, and there are levels of service that we provide. Is there a difference between the two? Or do we anticipate increasing levels of service? Or I know that this is the future, but what is the anticipation here?
Peter? Thank you, Mr. Warden, to, to councillor Crockett. To clarify some of the camp, because we're talking $2022, and we're talking about needs that we understood in 2022 to put much of this plan together with exception of the two new service departments, cultural services and IT that you see before you here today. There is a distinction between the infrastructure needs gap. Every department and service area has identified some infrastructure needs gaps. The plan that was presented to council provided a practical achievable plan that continued on with current practices and current levels of service that we've been delivering on the infrastructure and the services provided to the public that the county is responsible for. Over this next and final phase of the development of the camp, council will have an opportunity to revisit all of the department's levels of service and approve them and set them. And that could mean either an increase or a decrease in spending depending on council's decision. There are some required regulated levels of service, for example, with roads and minimum maintenance standards, that there is no flexibility on, but I'm sure there are other service areas where council would have some flexibility on. So once those levels of services and those targets are fully approved and adopted, we'll be able to revise the 10-year plan going forward and also incorporate anticipated future growth, which really wasn't on the horizon as prominently as it is for us today over the next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor, councillor Jiguer?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you. So just wanted to clarify two things then. We have a capital reserve and we have a growth reserve at the moment because, so that's confirmed, right? I saw the nod, okay. And so at this time, we have not finished deciding on levels of service. So therefore, we have not identified what our financial needs are going to be to fulfill that level of service, which means we do not yet know if our capital reserve is truly sufficient and to what extent we're going to need the growth reserve. Okay, thank you for confirming that.
Yes.
And just a follow-up, we could, we could never know that. We don't know the fluctuation of interest rates. We don't know the size. We don't know the growth. Can you just confirm that as well, please?
At this time, we can make projections, but no, we will never know the exact impact on that. Given the past years, we did not actually anticipate the large amount of CPI that we experienced as well. So even though the Bank of Canada rate is going down slowly, it's not going down at the same rate that it went up. So it's very clear that they're cautious as to where we will end up, whether we'll be at a two or a three or a four.
Supplemental through, sorry, through you, Warden. And just to finalize that and the comment made by councillor Crockett and on the suggestion of councillor Jiguer, that we have a response. We have a plan on reserves. And the only thing I would add to what I think is a great suggestion by councillor Jiguer is that we, a timeline to it, so that we, you know, we're going to be looking at our budget as of a certain time, and it would be good to have some of this information as councillor Jiguer suggests, that maybe we say, you know, it's going to be in September, October, and just kind of put an end, or close that loop, if you will, on, on, on timing. That's my only suggestion. Thanks, Warden.
All right, thank you for that. Blaine, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you to members of council. A couple of thoughts with respect to our reserves and our reserve management. If you recall, council has provided direction to staff to develop various policies with respect to our financial management, one being a reserve policy, reserve management policy that Ms. Ford is under development. I would estimate that at about the 90% point now. So that would come forward to council within the next, I'm going to say the next couple of cycles of meetings. We can certainly provide, I think, the information that councillor Jiguer has requested with respect to the status of each of the reserves with that, so that you can start to see sort of the, the, where we currently sit with respect to our reserves or our financial condition. And then you'll keep that in, in mind when we're starting to look at the policy, which should provide some guidance certainly to the administration as well as council on the management of, of those reserves. The other thought that, that I'd like to share with council, and I've, I've mentioned it a couple of times, that the need for a long-range financial planning tool, because I think it gets to some of the concerns you've raised, councillor Sloan, with respect to growth, how do we factor in growth? And really it is, how clear is your crystal ball? But it really does provide the one repository for not only all our asset management needs and our anticipated, to the best of our knowledge, growth needs from an infrastructure investment perspective, but it also factors in the other side of the ledger with respect to anticipated revenues. Because with growth, as council's aware, yes, our expenditures go up, so do our revenues. So we can factor both of those in as well. We can also factor in our ongoing operating costs of, of the county, of the infrastructure that we have, and factor that, the growth of those operating costs as well. So that's really the, the tool that I believe Ms. Ford has referenced when she said we'll be developing that in 2025. That's that central repository where all that information can be held. And it, if you will, it's a series of dials that council can, can alter or adjust as they see fit. That is tied in with the levels of service that Mr. Ducek has, has mentioned with respect to our, our infrastructure. That in, in effort, or in essence, is related to the level of performance that those assets are, have to perform at. So whatever levels of service we're looking at, we can correspond that with the level of performance that the assets need, which will provide council with some, certainly a great deal more clarity on the level of investment that's required or the level of reserves that is required. From best practice in asset management, we track the depreciation of all our assets. Ideally, you'd like to be funding that depreciation so that when the time comes that you have to replace that asset, you have a good start in your asset replacement reserve to fund that, and you're not looking at large tax increases that are unexpected or unplanned. You'd like to be able to plan those out. Again, using that long-range financial planning tool is the mechanism that would allow council to do that. So that's just a little bit of, of context, I think, as to where we are headed, some of the background work that's currently being done now, and certainly what council will see over the next couple of months into next year. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
And thank you for that, Blaine. Any further discussion, questions for Peter on this? Councillor Winter?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to Jen. Jen, you alluded, we have to spend or borrow $25 million for Terrace Lodge. What's your best estimate what our total debt would be after we borrow the 25 million? There must be some more debt beyond that, I would imagine.
Yes, through you, Mr. Warden, to councillor Winter. We do have, we did borrow 12 million a few years ago, so we're probably at around eight on that one. So we would have eight million plus another 25 once we take on the debt for Terrace Lodge. Right now, we are heavily borrowing on our reserves because we are trying to mitigate that in interest rate right now. It's sitting at 4.59. It's come down to like 4.79 or something. So it's slowly coming down, but once we lock in that rate, we are locked in for the 25-year term. We cannot refinance that. So we want to make that as low as we can.
Okay, anything further from members? It's good discussion. It's, it's a daunting plan, and I suspect that when it comes forward with the service levels, decisions that have to be made next year are going to even be more daunting, but it's prudent. And it's prudent that, from a forward planning perspective. So, as I said, buckle in. Catherine, do you have a motion for us? Please.
Resolved that the report titled Corporate Asset Management Plan Update from the Director of Engineering Services dated June 25th, 2024 be received and filed, and that staff provide a follow-up report on the use of reserves as related to the corporate asset management plan in conjunction with previous direction regarding a growth reserve management policy.
Okay, anyone interested in moving that? Deputy Warden Jones, councillor Jiguer? All in favour? That is carried. Thank you. Thank you, Peter and Jen. Moving forward to six two, Manager of Ministry of Services. Moving forward to six two, Manager of Administrative Services, Deputy Clerk, Appointment Bylaws Update. Catherine, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden through you to County Council. This report recommends the approval of updates to three bylaws that are at the end of your council packages. The Deputy Clerk and Deputy Clerk Alternate Appointment Bylaw, the Land Division Secretary Alternate Appointment Bylaw, and the bylaw that delegates certain authorities under the Planning Act. Staff, as I mentioned at our last council meeting, in administrative services have been reviewing our bylaws and policies to ensure that they are accurate and clear. And these three bylaws require updates largely to reflect updates in changes in staffing, changes in titles, and to reflect the actual backup practices that occur in our department. So the first is the bylaw being a bylaw to appoint a deputy clerk and deputy clerk alternate for the Corporation of the County of Elgin and to repeal the previous bylaw twenty two thirty seven. So this bylaw just needs to be updated to reflect the accurate current reporting relationships and backup practices for the Deputy Clerk position as well as a difference in job titles. The said that the county solicitor was one of the alternates, but that title does not exist anymore and it's now the Director of Legal Services. So that's the reason for the update to that one. The others related to planning are largely due to the fact that they delegate authority to the manager of planning. This position is currently vacant and we would like to delegate this to the Director of Planning and Development. Also for that delegated authority by law, it also said that the alternate was the General Manager of Engineering, Planning and Enterprise. So we would like, should, and the CA, sorry, Deputy CAO, should the manager of planning be unavailable? We would like the alternate for this delegated authority to be the Director of Legal Services. So the delegated authority to the Director of Planning and the alternate to the Director of Legal Services. And the third and final bylaw that we are recommending changes to is the appointment of someone to carry out the duties of the Land Division Secretary, should the Land Division Secretary be unable for any reason. And this currently, the currently existing bylaw says it's the manager of planning. And of course, we would like to change this to the Director of Planning and Development. And then the clerk slash clerk designate could be appointed as a third alternate, should the the planning technician and the Director of Planning be unavailable. I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that report, Catherine. Does anyone have any concerns or questions for Catherine on this? Rather a housekeeping item. It makes sense. In fact, some of these roles are already, as you say, the current practices and it's just an update. And puts more weight back on Matt. Welcome aboard. Seeing no questions, Catherine, we'll take the motion, please.
Resolved that the report titled Appointment Bylaws Update from the Manager of Administrative Services Deputy Clerk dated June tenth, twenty twenty four be received and filed and that County Council approve updated versions of the Deputy Clerk and Deputy Clerk Alternate Appointment Bylaw, the Land Division Secretary Alternate Appointment Bylaw, and the bylaw delegating certain authorities under the Planning Act.
We have a mover and seconder for that. Lots. Counselor Hens and Counselor Noble will second. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Brings us to section six three from the Manager of Administrative Services Deputy Clerk, Approval of Fees and Charges, twenty twenty four. Catherine, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden through you to County Council. This is our annual update of our county fees and charges bylaw. The, a copy of the bylaw with the updates indicated in red is attached to this report. There are few changes this year. There's a change in community and cultural services for the replacement of lost or damaged Yoto players. It's increased from a hundred and sixty to between two hundred and ten to two hundred and sixty five, just to reflect actual costs. And then a category, so a Yoto player, I did include this in the report because I also did not know, is a small programmable audio player with a clock and a nightlight that library patients can borrow from the library. And it has family radio stations and free stories and music and podcasts. So this is just an update to the replacement fee for those. And then a category called game kits was just changed to puzzles and games to more accurately reflect the items that are, that are under that area. The land division fees have increased by a hundred dollars, the consent fees as well as the validation fees, both from one thousand two hundred and fifty to one thousand three hundred and fifty, and those are a result of changes to that council previously approved to the Land Division Committee. And then there are a whole list of homes and senior services changes, some to the Meals on Wheels, which have already been approved by council, and others to services largely hair care services and meal services, all of which Michelle says she would be happy to speak to if there are any questions. Those are the changes that are indicated in red. And then at the end of the council agenda, there is a, a clean copy of the bylaw for consideration. I would be happy to answer any questions or Michelle would be happy to answer any questions regarding homes fees. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Catherine, for that. Does anyone have any questions regarding the fees and the updated bylaw? Pretty straightforward. Okay, Catherine, we'll have the motion, please.
Resolved that the report titled Approval of Fees and Charges, twenty twenty four dated June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four from the Manager of Administrative Services Deputy Clerk be received and filed and that the charges to fees and charges identified in Schedule A of the aforementioned report be approved and imposed to commence on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, and that the corresponding bylaw be considered for approval by council.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? Deputy Warden Jones and Counselor Noble will second. All in favor? That's carried. This brings us to section seven, Council Correspondence, seven point one, Items for Consideration, seven one one. We have a resolution from Municipality of Dutton Dunwich regarding request for sideline sidewalks along Curry Road and Pioneer Line west of Curry Road. A member of staff speaking to this? Left the building. Perhaps the petitioner might want to speak to this?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to council. This issue came from concerned parents. Our commercial development on the corner of Curry and Pioneer is under development. The first commercial building is a McDonald's. So of course, the Dutton Dunwich Public School students are going to flock down to the McDonald's. Curry Road is very busy and the reason we requested county input is there is planned roadwork at that very intersection. So we thought in coordination with the county, we should get them involved. First of all, is it feasible? Can we put a sidewalk down the busy Curry Road or do we have to explore other options? I have spoken in the past to Peter on this issue. I don't know exactly where the responsibility lies in, in financing this thing, but what we are looking for is county input into the construction of a sidewalk along Curry.
To understand, then you would be looking for county staff involvement in the planning at this point anyway, and then perhaps, perhaps the prudent thing would be have a staff report come back from the Director of Engineering to suggest where the county responsibility lies. That work?
Mr. Warden, exactly. That's what we're looking for. Okay. We do not have engineering on the staff of Dutton Dunwich. So we are looking for assistance on this. So if the county could take a look at this, it would help us a great deal.
Okay. Comment from senior staff, Blaine?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. Yes, that's exactly what I would, what I would recommend is requesting that staff investigate the situation, certainly work with the staff at Dutton Dunwich and bring a report back to council with sort of parameters of the project, our thoughts, where the county could, could assist, things like that.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Any other questions or comments on this? Giving Catherine a moment here to scribe a resolution. We're going to get Counselor Winter to do a dance routine to occupy some time. Oh, Catherine's ready. Saved by the bell.
Resolved that staff be directed to work with staff at Dutton Dunwich to investigate a request for sidewalks along Curry Road and Pioneer Line west of Curry Road and that a report be presented to County Council at a future meeting.
Okay. Do we have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Winter will move. Counselor Latham will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Moving on to section seven two, Items for Information, the Consent Agenda. I believe we have two items. One from Doug Raycraft, Chair of, and Patricia Greig, Secretary Treasurer with a memo calling for nominations to the Community Schools Alliance Executive Committee. And the second, an email corresponds from the Association of Municipalities Ontario regarding the Funding Agreement for the Renewed Canada Community Building Fund, twenty twenty four to twenty thirty four. Does anyone have any questions or concerns with any of this correspondence? Okay. Catherine, you got a motion for us?
Resolved that Correspondence Items seven point two point one to seven point two point two be received and filed.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Noble and Counselor Sloan will second. All in flavor, uh, favor, excuse me. Yeah, all in flavor. Any opposed? Seeing none. It's carried. Thank you. Section eight, Other Business, Statements and Inquiries by Members. I'm going to take the opportunity right now to inform council that we are in the preliminary stages of planning, a strategic planning exercise for council. And I'm going to invite Blaine to perhaps brief council on what to expect in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just wanted to bring council up to speed on a couple of things that have been happening in the background. If you turn your minds back a couple of meeting cycles ago, when I spoke to council about my first few months here and where I thought we needed to go, the last slide was a number of fairly large initiatives that we'll be undertaking this year, starting with the development of a mission and vision and values for the the corporation and then moving into a strategic planning exercise as well as a more comprehensive business planning process. So all of that is actually kicked off now. We've retained the services of of a strategic planning consultant that I've used a number of times in the past for this type of work to start working with, with the, both the executive team as well as council on the development of a mission, vision and values as well as a strategic plan. So the next session of council on July the ninth will be a working session with with all of council and the executive team, walking through that exercise. There will be material provided in advance for you to do some homework, to, to bring to that exercise. We had our first session last week with the executive team, met off site for a day and walked through some preliminary exercises on developing the mission, vision and values and some of the challenges the organization's facing, things like that, a little bit of an environmental scan. And then we spent the afternoon starting into what our business planning process for this year, leading into twenty twenty five's plan and budget will look like. So there's a number of things on the go in the background with respect to those very large initiatives. So thank you, Mr. Warden, but I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. But our next session will be an exciting one.
Okay. Thank you very much for that, Blaine. Does anyone have any questions for staff at this point? Okay. We look forward to the strategic planning exercise. Before we move on from statements and inquiries from members, I also want to mention that Blaine will soon have reached the six month milestone with us. Dot, dot, dot. Part of the, part of the agreement with Blaine's contracts that we do need to go through a six month review with Blaine. And we have been working in the background. I've been working with Amy and I'm going to have a further conversation with Blaine on that. So expect this in July, probably the ninth isn't a good day to do it, but perhaps later on in July and what that review is going to look like. I've got a template in front of me. Again, after I consult with staff on this, whether it is a written from council individual or whether we go to a, using the same template, but using a verbal format and use more written for the annual review, which would come up at the end of the year. So we'll make those decisions and we'll keep you informed and moving forward. So that's that. Hopefully there's no concerns on that one. Okay. Brings us to eight point two, Notice of Motion, and Counselor Sloan.
Thank you, Warden, and thank you colleagues for the opportunity to speak today on the healthcare initiative proposed. When I had my first council meeting, I was struck by the rich heritage that goes along with this position and this institution. From the pictures on the walls and the community leaders who have come before to the tie, the jacket and a history of leadership on files that were important. From Rodney to Port Burble, Fingle to Almer, Port Bruce to Wallaston, I could go on and all points in between. I think it's topical that today we're speaking about infrastructure needs. We're also speaking about a mission, vision and challenges. Healthcare support has been key to the county's goal of unifying our communities by promoting, promoting excellent services and resources for our residents. I don't need to dwell on the importance of an MRI or the hospice to this group. My colleagues at the table have far more experience in healthcare municipal matters than I do. And today, the great care, the great healthcare that's offered is due in large part by people that sit at this horseshoe. I'd just like to give my brief perspective on the financial side. Elgin County has managed its finances in a way which allows us to invest in vital programs such as these. Our recent budget and the adoption of option three buttressed our reserves, but did not, as I had hoped, provide resources for hospital and hospice as many had requested. The request today of three hundred thousand dollars a year, as I have underlined, is thirty cents on a hundred dollars and our operating budget is now in excess of, sorry, our operating and capital budget is now in excess of a hundred million dollars. This year, we've saved three hundred thousand dollars on one project due to our staff's prudence, our staff's interest in financial management. And these professionals will continue to find opportunities for savings. Next year and the five to follow, you'll see in the, in the initiative that this council, this staff will be provided with the option going forward of this decision coming back to this table. How will we fund the three hundred thousand dollars a year? Will it be from reserves? Perhaps the end of year surplus? A portion of taxes which would equal pennies on the dollar for those who are supporting our upper tier through the lower tier investment as well as what we do here for countywide services. My proposal has the decision for the subsequent years back at this governing council. It provides oversight, it provides transparency and a process for us to annually look at a healthcare initiative to let the nine people here make the decision on how the funding will be allotted, to work with Blaine, to work with our professional senior staff who are problem solvers and ardent community supporters. I'll leave you to this discussion on the proposal as I value and look forward to the discussion and the debate on this key issue. But I ask what other issue, what other investment could be more important to serve the people who elected us as well as honor those who came before us. My thanks.
All right. Thank you for that, Counselor Sloan. With specific to the motion that's before us, is there a mover and seconder for discussion?
I'm the mover and I think there's a, sorry, through you, Warden, I'm the mover and I believe I have a seconder.
Counselor Cookett will second. Discussion, please. Deputy Warden Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So I think everybody in the room knows how I feel about this. I'm adamant supporter of this notion. But today's not the day. We know staff is bringing a report forward in the near future. And I'm not prepared to take my staff out at the knees prematurely and I expect that when staff does bring the report forward, that County Council will have a discussion and give finance committee direction at that point. At that time, I will support the foundation and the hospice, but today's not the day. Sorry.
Thank you for comments on that, Counselor, excuse me, Deputy Warden Jones. That was previously decided by council, giving direction actually to staff to bring us back that policy so that we had a better understanding of its use and what us back that policy so that we had a better understanding of its use and what would be for. And the agreement was that we would make that decision once we had that policy in place. Councillor Cookett?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just to provide some, I guess, some background on this, at the February 27th proposed budget meeting, there was a resolution that I made and was seconded by Councillor Tilly at the time. The resolution read that funding for hospice and St. Thomas Elgin General Hospital be considered at a later date in 2024. Unfortunately, didn't put a date on that resolution and then Councillor Sloan for bringing forward this motion. I think, you know, now is the time. It's just a matter of finding the $300,000, which Councillor Sloan has said already that there have been savings in various areas of the budget to cover that amount. I do understand the arguments about core responsibilities, which is one of the arguments I'm sure that, you know, we've kind of looked at. But I also believe that we should go beyond, I believe, the fiduciary, I guess you would call it, the fiduciary responsibilities that this council has. We also have a community responsibility. And what better way to handle that responsibility than looking at health? And I'll leave it at that point and let others speak, but I think this is the right time and I think we have the funds to do this.
Okay. First, one thing, you speak of particular savings with respect to bids, project bids or under budget project bids, but those are unrealized savings because those projects are not completed. We don't know the result at the end of the day, whether there's going to be contingencies, whether there's going to be incurred costs which were unrealized. So at this point, any of those things from a capital nature are still unrealized. There are no funds at this moment. That's just a comment. Any additional comments? Councillor Henson?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. At budget time, I felt council didn't get a opportunity to fully debate this issue. And my understanding was that staff was going to come back with some recommendations. Number one, does council entertain these types of requests? And if so, how do we finance them? I have another point, we're halfway through a fiscal year. I don't like surprises and I'm sure our Director of Finance doesn't like surprises and this is somewhat of a surprise in my opinion. Two weeks ago, we had a budget meeting. This issue came up at that time. Who was going to address this challenge that we have? The committee? And at that time, our CAO, Blaine, answered my question quite well, and I'm just wondering if all of council should hear that response to the issue at that time. So I'll leave that up to our CAO to respond to that.
Now you've got to remember what he said.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
While he's thinking, I would like to just state that I am aware that staff are working on, as you say, the policy and the policies regarding reserves and what should or should not be allocated or funded from those particular reserves. And that is something that council will have opportunity to debate and have a more fulsome discussion on. And I think, as the deputy warden's suggesting, that once we have those underpinnings in place, then we're in a better position to have the more fulsome discussion on whether we should or should not be participating in these outside funding opportunities, I guess is the way to describe it. Did I capture it, Blaine?
Thank you, Mr. Warden and Councillor Henson. I'm, thank you, I'm hoping what I said was a good thing, but because right now I'm drawing a bit of a blank, it's through the exact words that I used, but the context, I think, at the budget committee meeting was for that committee to evolve to a finance committee and take a broader perspective or a more holistic view, a longer term view on the financial situation of, for the financial condition of the county and the organization itself. So topics like this, I think, are best discussed at that type of format or that type of table to incorporate into that longer term planning view. So I'm thinking that's what I said, perhaps not word for word, but it's certainly, you know, an issue that, you know, I think there's always and always has to be support for, you know, healthcare throughout our community. It's just a matter of when and how, you know, the county chooses to go about doing that. But the discussion, I think, is certainly would be valuable around that longer term planning type horizon within a finance committee.
Thank you, Blaine. Councillor Sloan?
Thank you. It's funny, whoops, just dropped my pen. We came to the council here and I think it was Councillor Jones and I'm not sure who's on the Elgin-St. Thomas Health Unit asking for another half a million dollars and the needs that we had to do it. I think it comes down and my question is whether we can afford it. When it comes to surprises, I don't see a surprise when option three and three point, an extra $4 million in tax assessment was brought forward. Staff came through with three options. Option one, option two, option three, we took the most expensive for our ratepayers, which provided us with the three or four cents on a doll, three or 40 cents on a dollar, which we could use for what many would consider a bit of a vital process. Now, I'm not saying that we talk about going to staff, so I guess I'm asking you through Blaine, do you not think we can afford this? Through you, Warden.
Why they pay you the big dollars, buddy?
Thank you, Mr. Warden and through you, Councillor Sloan and members of council. Affordability is an interesting discussion and it's really defined by council as to what the community can afford. Our role obviously is to provide the best information for council, the best analysis for that information, so the council can make certainly more informed decisions driven by that data and that analysis. Affordability, we can afford many things if council wishes the community to afford it. So that's, it's a very delicate question, Councillor Sloan, and I'd like to provide you with greater detail, but it's a challenge with respect to how do you define affordability? And I would leave that in the hands of council and us certainly to provide the information to support council's deliberations on that.
Further discussion, Councillor Jagir.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So I want to thank Councillor Sloan for raising this today, just because it provides us an opportunity to reiterate to the community that I think individually, we all believe that these two causes, if I can call them that, they're important, they're critical. Certainly, I value them, I fully support them. Then the question, so I share in that view and so thank you for that. So the question, as others have mentioned already, is then how to fund that, who should fund that? There is a debate to be had. A debate should be informed. I think everybody has made it very clear that we're not informed yet as to we are elected to provide municipal services according to the municipal act and our first and foremost fiduciary duty is to ensure that we have a long view and asset management plan, that all the municipal, that we know that we have a sound financing strategy and all the assets that we, our ratepayers give us, they don't give it, they pay money for services and assets to be maintained. So we've got to make sure that what they paid for is what they get. If there's money after that and there is discretion, then that's where we need to have the debate. The CAO mentioned that we are overdue for refreshing our strategic plan because a lot has happened since the last time we sat around to decide what is most important for this community, what is the vision, how do we want to support that? So I believe that those conversations will further inform also what we do if and when, if and when there is additional money. In the, in the motion today, there is an assumption that our ratepayers can afford to spend outside, because we're carrying a fair amount of debt, but the, our ratepayers can afford to spend outside of, for municipal services and they support us using the money that they've paid for municipal services for something that is not a municipal responsibility. So basically, we're making an assumption that it's okay to make a donation on their behalf. And sometimes, so the question I am left with and that will continue to ponder is fundraising means going, pounding the pavement, going door to door, and if every ratepayer who apparently can afford it and believes that this is really important, gives 50 bucks, then we have our half million dollars. So if that means then putting an extra levy in a separate line, I've mentioned that before, just so that it's transparent and they can get a tax receipt, but we'll have to be careful about the business of frankly, what I consider a shortcut, when a fundraising campaign, a community-driven fundraising campaign, then uses or is asking to use funds that were paid by ratepayers for municipal services. So we'll have to have some good conversations with our ratepayers as to whether they give us the consent to do that, because that's not what we were elected for.
Thank you for those comments. Any other? Do you have, Councillor Noble?
Well. Through you, Warden. With some of the comments that were made, it sounds like part of this decision's already been made and we're ultimately at some point going to support the hospital and the hospice through some of the comments that were made today. So if that's the case, then I think it's prudent to give the hospital and the hospice some reassurance that we're going to do something. And if staff and budgeting and stuff needs a little bit of extra time, then maybe those payments could start next year and, and we look at, on this motion that we adjust maybe the timing of it. But I think it's, I think it's important if we're going to ultimately support them, that we at least let them know today.
Councillor Sloan?
Thank you, through you, Warden, and to respond to Councillor Jagir. On the day of the budget, when we gave the three, the highest increase of the three options and we gave the art gallery $40,000, we talked a little bit about process. We have an institution that again, we didn't ask them for $2 on their tax assessment to support the art gallery. We were discussing process, we were discussing how we best suited investments for our community. The governing council role, as I see it, is to represent our constituents from the lower tiers here at the county upper level. So Blaine, and I appreciate all your thoughts on this, Blaine, and your hard work, does the county wish the community to afford this? So regardless of what's on the table for an initial, as I say, 30 cents on $100, the question I ask councillors today is do they wish our community will afford this? Strategic plans are great and they became very popular in the last 20 years, but I hazard a guess that the strategic plan might come up with things. And again, my strategic plan comes from knocking on doors about 18 months ago and I got quite a strategy going forward of what the people of Central Elgin wanted. Does the county wish to afford this? Well, the strategic plan, my guess is that if we ask the person that's coming in to facilitate, we know that Councillor Jones, who is a proponent of increasing doctors to the area and has mentioned that this is a vital import to have these services, looks beyond the process of getting us there and more the result of us having gotten there. So my guess is the strategic plan will say that healthcare is more important as people age. My guess is that if they were offered the ability as a taxpayer to promote 10 items and one of them was hospice and MRI, they would be in the top two. So those are my points. I just want, as we, as we do vote on this, looking less at the process and more of the question, which again, Blaine makes in a succinct fashion, does the county wish the community to afford this? Thank you, Warden.
Deputy Warden Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I haven't changed my decision on how this is, I think we need to allow staff a month or whatever, it's going to, I know the report's close to being finalized, give them the opportunity to present the report at least, I guess, that's just proper etiquette. I, you know what, at budget time, I was very clear I wanted that, but I didn't get support. So that meant only four people supported it around this table. Five didn't. So I think you have to live by the sword you've felt or fall on your sword, whatever, but we're halfway through the cycle now that Councillor Henson says and now we have to go through the process and do it properly.
Correct. Okay. Any additional comments, Councillor Warden?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I know the county here, we do have a grant committee and we did through a lot of grants in the springtime when we have all these grants, we give out the money. We do ask for some financial input from them. Would that be something we could do here just for our due diligence to say, because I know with our committee, that did help a lot this year, a lot that we didn't turn down. We turned down because they had enough money, we thought, to move on. Just for due diligence, was that something we could ask for in this case? Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Cookett?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Part of the, part of the discussion on February the 27th was taking a look at, I think, some kind of a process to deal with requests of this nature. And I'm hearing that that process is taking place with staff right now, which I think is good. However, and I'm looking at Councillor Noble's comment, we need some kind of an indication right now to the hospital and to the hospice about how this council stands on supporting them. I'm hearing that we are all in favor of the work that they do and the way to be in favor is to vote right now in terms of finding this money. As a governing council, we are the ones who direct staff to find the funds, to support the projects. So I think that's what we do. And there's some talk about municipal responsibilities and that supporting requests of this nature is not a core municipal responsibility. That's true. However, council does support a lot of non-core municipal responsibilities, the library being one of them, museum being one of them, the art gallery being one of them. Those are not mandated municipal responsibilities. And I think we have a responsibility to the community and to the ratepayers to make the right decision about supporting the hospital and the hospice. And I don't think we should be putting it off in some future report by staff. Reports by staff are requested by council, so we can very well right now simply us staff find the money. Let's move on.
Okay, Councillor Jagir, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a few clarifications. I think I'm hearing slightly different interpretation of, or I have a different interpretation than what is being said. I think individual support doesn't, for the, these initiatives should not be interpreted as council support or as support for these initiatives being funded through a tax levy, a municipal tax levy. So I wanted to clarify that. So I think there's a bit of speculation, over speculation on already the will of council when it has not been debated, and I think it has been made clear that we're not fully informed to have a proper debate yet. And I do want to point out that cultural services, such as museum, art galleries and libraries, are listed in the core, in the municipal act, in the core responsibilities of municipalities. Hospitals and hospices are not. Needed to clarify that. And the art gallery at the moment is a line item under cultural services, so it's not discretionary. It is, it has been part and it is listed in our So it's not discretionary. It is, it has been part and it is listed in our list of responsibilities.
All right. Thank you for that. Okay, councillor Latham, I was just going to solicit council for any more comments. Councillor Latham?
I obviously support hospitals and the hospice. But this is something I think that should be discussed properly at our next budget with our within our next budget meetings. It's something that we can't do right now because everything's been taken care of as regards the monies that are being spent. But in our up and coming budget, then I think we should consider this, talk about it, come up with a decision. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Okay. You have more comments? Okay, councillor Noble?
Through you, Mr. Warden. I'm just wondering if council would have more of an appetite if the payments started next year where staff had the opportunity to put this in their budget. And just one other thing, if the payments were stretched out to eight years, it would only be two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year.
Well, thank you for that observation. Appreciate that. My sense around the table is that it's not going to be supported if you wish to move that motion today. So I'm going to look at the mover and seconder. Do you wish to defer until we've had proper discussion on the policy coming forward? Or do you want to roll the dice?
Well, respectfully, Warden, I don't think it's rolling the dice. I think that as councillor Cookett says, we have the C A O saying it's the council's decision that the council's deferring to staff on the decision. We've been offered opportunities with respect to when with respect to perhaps how much I'd consider an amendment for amendment rather to start the payments in twenty twenty five. But as I say, with option three on the budget, there were discussions at that time of what would be spent with the extra four million, approximately four million dollars. So the the and I would defer to here to my seconder who who I think at this point we would, as I say, just return to our our group here and ask them if they think that this investment is, you know, is something that they want to support today.
Councillor Cookett?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mr. Warden. With all due respect, I do believe that we are engaged in a proper discussion. Several members talked about we need to defer this in order to talk properly, but I think we are. Secondly, I certainly would welcome an amendment to start it next year rather than lose everything here. I think we should move forward in some fashion. So if if council wants to look at it beginning next year, that's fine.
Catherine, as to process, the motion really hasn't been read. It's printed before us. Does it need to be read? All right, if the mover and seconder agree with the amendment that is being proposed, then Catherine can include that or incorporate that into the motion and then she'll read the motion. That's councillor Sloan. Councillor Cookett? Catherine?
Whereas the county of Elgin has historically provided financial support for major projects and initiatives of the St. Thomas Elgin General Hospital. Whereas the county of Elgin provides approximately six million annually to top up long-term care services in Elgin County homes as part of its commitment to ensuring a high level of care for our community members and loved ones. And whereas access to healthcare services and support within our community and across the healthcare continuum is a critical component of quality of life in Elgin County. Now therefore be it resolved that the county of Elgin established the Elgin County Healthcare Fund of one point eight million over a minimum of six years to support resident access to high quality localized care and that the fund be divided between the Transforming Tomorrow Diagnostic Imaging Campaign for the St. Thomas Elgin General Hospital, one point three million and Hospice of Elgin, five hundred thousand dollars. And that payments begin in twenty twenty five. And that staff be directed to provide annual reports to council with an update on fund amounts and disbursements.
All right, having heard the motion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion is lost.
Could you record the vote, please, Warden?
Catherine?
When I say your name, say yea or nay. Councillor Richard Latham? Councillor Mike Hens? Councillor Grant Jones? Councillor Andrew Sloan?
Yes.
Councillor Todd Noble?
Yes.
Councillor Jack Cookett?
Yes.
Councillor Dominique Shiger? Councillor Mark Widner? Warden Ed Ketchever?
Nay.
Three, six, the motion is defeated.
All right, thank you. Moving on to eight point three matters of urgency. Are there any? There's none on the agenda. Which brings us then to closed meeting items. And I need a mover and seconder for the following. You ready, Catherine?
Resolved that we do now proceed into closed meeting session in accordance with the municipal act to discuss the following matters under municipal act section two thirty nine two. Closed meeting item number one, L S twenty four dash seven staffing update. Under section B, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. And closed meeting item number two, L S twenty four dash eight telecommunications agreement. Under section K, a position plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board.
Do we have a mover and seconder, please? Councillor Sloan will move. Councillor Noble will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Okay. Welcome back. Motion to rise and report.
Resolved that we do now rise and report.
Mover and seconder, please. Councillor Sloan and councillor Widner will second. All in favor? That's carried. Closed meeting item number one?
Resolved that the report titled L S twenty four seven prosecution staffing update and request for resources from the Director of Legal Services dated June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four be received and filed and that council approved the creation of a part-time prosecutor position.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? Deputy Warden Jones, councillor Latham. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Closed meeting item number two.
Resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Mover and seconder, please. Councillor Hens and councillor Noble. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Section eleven, motion to adopt recommendations from the committee of the whole.
Resolved that we do now adopt recommendations of the committee of the whole.
Councillor Sloan will move that. Councillor Cookett will second. All in favor? That's carried. Section twelve, consideration of the bylaws. Bylaw twelve point one, that's twenty, I'll let you read it.
Bylaw twenty, bylaw number twenty four dash twenty three, deputy clerk and deputy clerks alternate appointment.
Being a bylaw to appoint a deputy clerk and a deputy clerk alternate for the corporation of the county of Elgin and to repeal bylaw number twenty two dash thirty seven. Resolved that bylaw number twenty four dash twenty three be now read a first, second and third time and finally passed.
Councillor Latham will move. Councillor Noble will second. All in favor? That's carried. Twelve point two?
Bylaw number twenty four twenty four, appointment of alternate land division secretary treasurer. Being a bylaw to appoint alternate persons to carry out the duties of the secretary treasurer of the Elgin County Land Division Committee when the secretary treasurer is unable for any reason to carry out his or her duties. Resolved that bylaw number twenty four twenty four be now read a first, second and third time and finally passed.
Mover and seconder, councillor Noble. Councillor Sloan will second. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Twelve, three.
Bylaw number twenty four twenty five, delegated approval authorities. Being a bylaw to delegate certain authorities vested in the council of the corporation of the county of Elgin as the approval authority with respect to plans of subdivision, plans of condominium and part of lot control bylaws pursuant to section twenty two and fifty one of the Planning Act to the Director of Planning and Development for the county of Elgin and to repeal bylaw number twenty two dash zero one. Resolved that bylaw number twenty four twenty five be now read a first, second and third time and finally passed.
Mover and seconder, councillor Sloan and councillor Widner. All in favor? That's carried. Twelve point four?
Bylaw number twenty four twenty six, fees and charges, twenty twenty four. A bylaw to provide a schedule of services and activities subject to fees and charges by the county of Elgin and to repeal bylaw number twenty three thirty three. Resolved that bylaw number twenty four twenty six be now read a first, second and third time and finally passed.
Mover and seconder, please. Councillor Noble will move. Deputy Warden Jones will second. All in favor? That's carried. All five?
Bylaw number twenty four twenty seven, Canada Community Building Fund Transfer Agreement. A bylaw to amend bylaw number fourteen fourteen, being a bylaw to authorize the county of Elgin to enter into an agreement with the Association of Municipalities of Ontario respecting the transfer of the Canada Community Building Fund, formerly federal gas tax revenues. Resolved that bylaw number twenty four twenty seven be now read a first, second and third time and finally passed.
Mover and seconder, please. Councillor Noble, councillor Sloan will second. All in favor? That's carried. And twelve, six?
Bylaw number twenty four twenty eight, confirmation. Being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the municipal council of the corporation of the county of Elgin at the June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four meeting. Resolved that bylaw number twenty four twenty eight be now read a first, second and third time and finally passed.
Mover and seconder, please. Councillor Sloan and councillor Noble. All in favor? That's carried, which brings us to adjournment motion.
Resolved that we do now adjourn at ten forty six A M to meet again on July ninth, twenty twenty four at nine o'clock A M.
Councillor Widner will move. Councillor Cookett will second. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you all for joining us this morning and to those viewing virtually, thank you and have a great day. We are adjourned.